Session at Livonia City Council. If we waited another 10 minutes, it would have been the 21st, but we're close. Let's go. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the honorable Kerry Wodzinski?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everybody. All right. So this is, this meeting sets the agenda for the 2028th regular meeting, which is a voting meeting that will take place on Wednesday, November 5th, where tonight's items will be officially voted on. We are missing our Vice President. She had a family emergency. And I'm going to jump right into audience communication. The council set aside 30 minutes for items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak, make your way to either podium. Name, address, or your favorite city, and you've got three minutes. I got you there.
You certainly did. Christopher Martin, and always my favorite state, great state of Michigan. And just like to make a few comments here. Kristoff, I'm sorry to hear about Jim Jolly's mom passing away, but I, I remember though, that when he was council president, he was the one that reestablished free speech in this city. And when you took over Brennan, I asked you if you were going to continue with that. He said that you would. People that spent a long night, but people that might want to look back at the seven o'clock meeting, you'll see the two council members tried to stop me under free speech at that particular audience communication time. And that was, let's say, overruled by Carter Fisher over there. And anyone who can read can look up stuff. You don't have to be an attorney to know what the law is about. The, I had mentioned too about campaign literature, and I will do it again. When someone is not here to speak at this podium, this woman has never spoken at this podium, never. And the end result is you can pay for these flyers, you can have them passed out, doesn't mean you're ever going to do a good job. The end result is that sitting home at your convenience, watching a council meeting on the computer is a whole lot different than getting your ass in here, standing at one of these podiums and speaking on a particular subject. It's a world of difference. Okay? And one last thing. One of the things that keeps my sanity after watching some of you, okay, is that maybe four times a year, I go on the computer and I look up the integrity when I see stuff like this. Integrity? Look up Hugh Thompson Jr. and read his story. Maybe four times a year I read that, just to kind of get me back to reality, when I do see what goes on in the way some people act. This guy didn't follow the crowd. He did the right thing. He paid a price for that. Hugh Thompson Jr. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Good evening.
Denise Mica, great city of Livonia. Okay, so I just want to, now if you can see this. No, you can't. Okay, here we go. Here's a picture of the sign at Silver Village, closing the community room. Because the last meeting, I guess I was not believed that the room was closed. It was closed for at least a week. I'm not sure if it's still closed, but I know definitely it was closed for a week right after the housing meeting. So it's a community building is locked, please call the office at blah, blah, blah for entry. Okay? So that's what I was going to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Good evening.
Yeah, good evening. Steve King, Coventry Gardens. Yeah, the last meeting, I got a text from my attorney after hearing what was coming from the council table. He wanted, he asked me if I wanted to add any names to the slander lawsuit I'm pursuing. I said, yes, definitely. As far as that sign goes, that, that's on Newburgh Village and Silver Village. They shut down the areas. It's their common space. It's their great room. It's where they live. They play cards there. They meet there. And they were punished. There was a timeout. They were sent to their rooms for daring, daring to speak out. That whole thing needs to be revisited. As we approach Election Day, I want to take a moment to thank incredible team of volunteers, friends, and neighbors who have worked tirelessly alongside me. Every door knocked, every conversation, every hour spent has brought us closer to building a stronger Livonia. This is a unique time in our city's history with four open seats. We have a rare opportunity to bring fresh perspectives and new energy to city council. I'm proud to stand among so many people who care deeply about the future of this community. To the residents of Livonia, thank you for your engagement, your ideas, your willingness to be part of the democratic process. Together, we're shaping the next chapter of our city. If you haven't yet marked your absentee ballot, there are still plenty of opportunities to meet the candidates and learn more before you vote. Tomorrow, you can visit all the candidates at the Senior Center that choose to show up from 6 to 9. Wednesday, you have the Rotary Spaghetti Dinner. The price is greatly increased, I think because of the Rotary fundraiser. And Rosedale Gardens, they, the neighborhood of Rosedale is, has a meet the candidates going on this week. And Sunday, I have something going on at the Wolverine Dog Center. So please, take a few minutes to get involved, get informed. Let's finish strong, stay positive, and keep working for a Livonia we can all be proud of. And when you see me walking in your neighborhood, and you will, please take a moment to have a conversation with me. I want to know how I can serve you. I get frustrated and disappointed when I am attacked by people who've never shown up at my teach-ins, never had a conversation, and won't debate me one-on-one, mano a mano, chair against chair, yet they cast aspersions against me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. King. All right. Don't see anybody else. I'm going to go to council for council communications. Yes?
Yeah, Council President. And I know I talked about the regular, but just real quick to the city attorney, if we can get clarification on this, because I know it was mentioned at the last study, last regular about residents, you know, essentially being told that they can't speak at those, at the Newburgh Village and other senior homes that we own. So I want clarification on that. If the housing director said that you, you know, threatened eviction and/or why the, I understand that now, thank you, that the, that room was closed, but maybe it was closed for some apparent reason for, you know, construction, whatever. I don't know what it was closed for. So since that aspersion was made, it'd be nice to just get a clarification from the administration. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anybody else? Council? All right. We're going to jump, oh, let me, I do see new data on the list for item two, and we're going to jump into new business. Item one is request to extend waiver use approval to the new owner. This comes to us from the Parsons to operate a massage establishment, a amphora within the Burton Hollow Shopping Center located on the east side of Farmington Road between Six Mile Road and Curtis in Section 10. Mr. Tormina?
Amorpheia Aesthetics was approved in 2016. Is that Burton Hollow Shopping Center? It is a massage establishment. It's met all the requirements of the ordinance in terms of separation from other licensed massage establishments, schools, play areas, and that sort of thing, also with limited hours. They today want to transfer ownership of that establishment. That was a restriction that was imposed by the council with the approval of the original waiver use. And so your request before you is to extend the approval to a new owner.
Sounds good. Is the petitioner here? All right. Yeah, if you'd like to come up, we'll just introduce you, and if the council has any questions, we can go from there. If you wouldn't mind, just state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Wendy Parsons.
All right. No, thanks for being here. Council, does anybody want to jump in? I could, I want to, this is kind of a funny one. So I, this is my favorite place. I go to the Baskin Robbins right there, and I know Hong's, I don't know if she's here or not, but she's one of the best around.
Yeah, she's my sister.
Yeah, she speaks very highly of you, and I can at least tell you from my perspective that they are a very great group of people and a great established business. So I'll open it up to council. Councilman Wodzinski.
So are you, are you the current owner? Are you looking to transfer, looking to transfer the ownership? Or are you looking to gain ownership of the business?
I want to keep the business.
Is she the buyer or the seller?
She is.
She's buying it? She's buying it?
I want to buy the business.
Okay, so you're, you're buying it.
And I do massage, keep it doing.
So are you currently an employee at the space? Or how did you become connected with the business? And have you previously owned a massage?
Sorry, my English isn't very good.
I'm questioning time.
You talk easy, please. Thank you.
Do you work at this building now?
Part-time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have you owned a business before?
I owned a business before, right now, at the, before, say, Altamansacre. Now it's UWM Support Complex. I work there. So if my sister, if Amorpheia are busy, I come here to help.
Mr. Chair, when she's done.
Will you have someone helping you run this business?
Yeah, we have three sisters, older one, and my middle, my younger one, and work of Amorpheia now.
Okay. Will the current employees stay the employees of the business?
Sorry, I'm not very honest there.
Workers, will the people who work there now continue to work there?
Yeah, my sister work there.
Three sisters.
Okay. Thank you. That's all for now.
That's all, thank you.
Councilwoman Toy.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi.
Where, 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 where did you originally land in the United States? How long have you been here?
I be here 2006 to now.
Okay. And you said you owned a business prior to this?
No, I have, I have one in Pontiac.
Oh, good.
So now I want to own this one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Don't let them charge you a lot of money.
No, one, one hour only $70, so not much.
Not much, not much.
Yeah, we have a twen-, yeah, we have a twen-, we have a twenty, we have a twenty minute too.
Oh, that's nice.
So we call acupuncture, acupuncture massage. It's very help a people.
So how many different kinds of massages do you do?
I, I, usually I do acupuncture, the points and the tendons.
With those needles?
No, no, no. Using my finger and my elbow.
Oh, you use your fingers. Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So it's a very, a lot of people like, I work 18 years.
Wow. Well, congratulations. You know, I usually don't ask for an approving right off the bat on these, but because our president has experienced your establishment, and he said it's very legitimate, and, you know, so I'd like to offer an approving. If, we'll determine if it should be on consent or not. It doesn't matter.
After tonight's meeting, I think we all need a massage.
Yeah, we kind of do.
Thank you. Thank you. I like my job. I just want to help people feel better.
That's nice.
Yeah, I really like my job.
So are you right next to the basket Robbins right there?
Right next to it.
Near the ice cream.
The ice cream store.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah. So you give ice cream along with your massages? No.
No.
That's okay. Nevermind. I don't want to confuse her. I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
Approving on consent.
Thank you, thank you.
How's it?
Councilman Donovan.
No, I just want a massage. I'm tired, so.
Oh, no. No, listen, you have an approving on consent. That means your matter is all but assured to approve, so you don't have to come back the next time. You're good.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much.
Tell your sister I said hi, and she's an awesome lady, and we're happy that you're staying in Livonia.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Good night. Get some sleep.
Any comments or from the audience? Listen. All right. Moving on to item two. I'm sorry, guys, you know, that's, and she said it's so cheap, but you know, I got a group, they got a Groupon special too. It's really good. Number two, waiver petition comes to us from the Planning Commission in reference to petition 2025-07-02-15 submitted by Manneken Smith Group on behalf of Clean Express Car Wash requesting waiver use approval to operate an auto wash establishment at 38888 Six Mile Road located on northeast corner of Fox Drive and Six Mile Road. Mr. Tormina?
Thank you. This is the site of the former Buca de Pepo restaurant located at the northeast corner of Fox Drive and Six Mile Road. This property is about 1.6 acres. It is L-shaped. It's unique from the standpoint, and pay attention to how the site is situated with the adjacent property owners. To the east is the Trinity House Theater and Cemetery, Livonia Cemetery. To the north is Angel Gardens, a sister living facility. Angel Gardens owns a strip of property that runs along the west side of the former Buca de Pepo, the site we're considering. And then Fox Drive, which is a private road owned and operated by Schoolcraft College. The zoning of the property is C2 General Business. It treats car washes as a waiver use. The restaurant would be demolished and replaced with a new car wash, including new parking, new lighting, landscaping, and access drives. The building would be about 14,230 square feet, centrally located on the property. The site's main driveway on Six Mile would be moved from the west side of the property to the east side, and that driveway would be restricted to right-in and right-out only. Vehicles would pass through the pay kiosks, which are on the east side of the building. There are three stacking lanes, so as you enter the site here off Six Mile, you're immediately, or you're directly in front of these three stacking lanes. The pay kiosks are located here in the northeast corner. Vehicles would then loop around, circle back south through the building and the car wash. As they exit that building, they would have the opportunity of either exiting back on the Six Mile Road westbound, because this is a right-only turn, or they could loop back around and enter the, back into the building where there would be interior vacuums, or they could enter nor, or continue north on the west side. There's additional vacuums provided along the outside of the building on the west side of the property, and then exit onto Fox Drive with a new driveway extending across that property that I mentioned earlier. The exterior of the building is predominantly a quick brick material, so it's a masonry product. Two different colors, a darker gray on the bottom, a lighter gray on top. The brown feature in the middle of the building is Niche Ha, that's a cement fiber material. You can see where the vacuums are located on the west side of the building. There are fully detailed landscaping plans, as well as photometric plans that were provided with the application. Dumpsters located in the northwest corner of the building with the gates facing the direction of Fox Drive. So the Planning Commission approval includes a number of conditions, including enhancing the south elevation of the building, limiting the hours, and these would be from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and from 8:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Sunday, turning off or dimming the exterior lights after the hours, after 8:00 p.m. until 7:00 a.m., adding sidewalks, and then providing an updated traffic study to council to affirm that the use will not have a significant negative impact. Additionally, they're requiring access to Fox Drive, working with Trinity House Theater to mitigate their parking issues, and restricting the driveway in Six Mile to right-in, right-out turns, which I mentioned previously. You'll note on your packet that there is a letter provided by Trinity House Theater. The plan you're looking at tonight is different from the plan that was reviewed by the Planning Commission. It moves the building a little bit further north, allowing for parking spaces to be provided in front of the building. Those spaces would be made available to Trinity House Theater. In addition, in addition, you do have some additional traffic generation information. There was a traffic impact analysis that was provided, however, it really is just an estimate or compares the trips generated from this proposed use to the, to the former restaurant use. And then lastly, we do not have any information on changes to the building elevation. That still is required as part of the Planning Commission approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tormina. I'm going to go to Councilman Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, Mr. Tormina, for that readout. That was my question, was going to be about the, the south elevation enhancements, and if we had received any enhancements yet, and maybe was there any recommendations of what that would look like? And the south would be the front-facing on Six Mile, if I understand correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. And then you talked about the traffic impact, so I'd like to hear from the petitioner about that, if they have traffic representatives here this evening. And then I know when looking at this plan, initially I thought that the car wash activities would be exclusively inside, but it looks like there are vacuums provided outside, and there will be vacuum activity happening outside, if I understand correctly.
Both inside and outside.
Okay. And then I will just know for council, we've approved, this is, this would be the third location of this company in Livonia, right? The same company?
That's correct. They have one on Farmington Road near Eight Mile, another on Plymouth Road, and this would be their third location.
Okay, nice. And I will say the other locations you guys have done are nice. I mean, you look at what was there before, and they're pretty, pretty rough buildings, and they look nice. Only thing I don't like, and that we didn't catch in the, initially when we went through this, was that I noticed their vacuums, those long arms, you're starting to see a lot of the petitioners do, which is fine, but they're actually illuminated.
Correct.
And that I did not know. I was used to the traditional pole lights in a parking lot, and I'd love to hear either our perspective from a city and/or the petitioner's perspective, because it was just, it threw me off. I wasn't used to it, it was the first time I saw it.
Sure. And we're working with the designers on a couple of these to address that issue. There's a couple of different ways it can be done. We're looking at placing shields on top of those to make those less, less intrusive in terms of glare. We want those LED lights that actually run along the, the vacuum hose itself to really be directed downward and not shine anywhere above that. So we're, we're looking at some different options. One is a shield, is another one is a tape product that they put right on top of the LED light fixture.
Yeah, I'll just note as one member, and I'm going to keep it open mind, council, but as this process goes on, I'm not a big fan of those lights. You know, the traditional ordinance that covers.
Correct.
Parking lot lights with poles and traditional LEDs. Everyone does it that way, and I think that's worked well with, with our ordinances. But I'll keep it open mind. But I do implore my colleagues to drive by at nighttime, now that it's getting darker earlier in the day, to drive by some of the locations and just look at those lights, and maybe it's something that you will think is important too. That's all my questions for staff right now. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council, any questions for Mr. Tormina? Then I'll go to the petitioners to ask questions, if you guys have anything, and then we'll go to the audience. All right. If the petitioner, if someone would like to come up and take some rounds of questions, just name and address for the record, and appreciate you hanging out with us in this early morning hour.
My name's Jay Krellet with the Manneken Smith Group. We're the engineering designer. I live at 808 North U Lane, Rochester.
Awesome. Thank you. Council?
Do you have, if there's a present, is there a presentation? Or, no, I mean, we.
We showed the renderings and everything already.
Yeah, no, this is, this is good. So Councilman Donovan.
Thanks, Mr. President. Thank you. Good evening, sir. Thanks for being with us at this, at this hour. Thank you very much. One of my questions, I'll start off with traffic. I know I've received multiple inquiries about traffic, and naturally, it's important. I think, I guess to give you a, you know, understanding where I'm coming from, regardless of what's there, it's going to be traffic. It's, it's going to generate traffic, whether it be a restaurant, whether it be a car wash, whether it be a dealership for motorcycles, no matter what, you know, it's going to generate traffic. But there is a conversation about the amount of traffic a particular petition does generate. So it'd be nice to understand more about what you're expecting traffic-wise, kind of dive into that a little bit. And then also, a conversation that's been brought up is, you know, you're proposing to demo this entire restaurant building. Are you owning the land? Are you leasing land? And why? And this is just out of my own curiosity. It's not legally speaking, but why is the landowner or you guys proposing to demo this and do a car wash as opposed to some other use, I guess? Just again, for more, mainly commentary to be placed on the record.
All right. So I'll see if I can hit all of these.
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate it.
So as far as traffic generation, ITE manual for car washes gives about 70 peak hour trips. That's in and out for peak hour. However, for a car wash use, the, they have a factor built into that for percentage of trips that are passed-by vehicles that are already on the road. And car wash is actually the highest value that they would provide for that. They estimate 75%, which in my opinion is still even a bit of a low-ball estimate as far as vehicles that are already on the road in the area. Essentially, car washes are an impulse purchase you get when you're going by. You're not leaving your house to go get a car wash and drive back home. It doesn't tend to generate nearly as much new traffic in the area as other uses such as a restaurant. The traffic study that was submitted to the planning department was a comparison of the car wash expected generation trips versus what you would have expected to see for the old Buca de Pepo restaurant that previously sat at this location. And it, it's a significant decrease for what you would expect trip-wise, as well as when you consider the fact that the implementation of this car wash here and the moving of the access drive at the southwest corner allows for the traffic signal that the college has been trying to get built at this intersection for the last two years to finally be installed.
So what you're saying is, you, what you're saying is your guys' petition generates less traffic than if it were to be a restaurant?
Less new trips, for sure, yeah.
Less new trips, okay. And you kind of touched on it, the traffic. Is there a traffic signal? Are you proposing a traffic signal at this intersection?
So the college has been working with the Wayne County, I believe.
Wayne County.
And they've had this thing ready to go for two years. The only thing holding it up is that access drive being located there. And us building this is going to allow that to be moved over to the southeast corner of our lot and allow that to go in, yeah. It's all fully, I believe, funded. We have someone here from Schoolcraft College who can speak on, but if you want some details on that. But I believe it's fully ready to go if this were to be approved, yeah.
Okay. We'll touch on that again, I assume. And my other question real quick was, again, it's not necessarily, you know, a legal question, but it's more of just, you know, out of curiosity, why this location? It's something that's been asked to me naturally from residents. They don't want to see a restaurant go away, and personally, I wish it was staying a restaurant, but that's not what's before me. The, the landowner, which I'm assuming is either going to be you or you're leasing it.
We have landowner shares as well.
Okay. If you can dig, dig deeper into that real quick of why this location, and why are you proposing to sell it and do a car wash as opposed to just trying to find a restaurant tenant?
Evening. My name is Rob Dorr, Ann Arbor, Michigan. My wife and I own that property. So everyone loves restaurants, we get that. Buca de Pepo was a great restaurant for a while, obviously with COVID hitting, and I'm only giving you some background here as to the thought that went through our minds. COVID hit was rough on all restaurants. Buca de Pepo was a publicly held, then became private equity, so they did have quite a bit of capital, but they eventually failed. They struggled for the past two or three years. My line of work, I've done a lot of advisement in hospitality, and I will say that restaurants, as much as we love them, they do have a high risk. First year, 19 to 33% of them will fail. Within the first five years, 51% will fail, depending upon what you have. National chains, obviously a higher success rate than independent. When Buca de Pepo did go down, we did put it out, taking offers for leasing it. We did not want to sell the land, and we did not receive any national chains that came in. We did have sheets that came to town and asked us, and we did not go in that direction. But we did have two independent chains in Michigan. But we did have two independent chains in Michigan. They did understand the risk that was involved, and they wanted us as owners to basically make a tax-free, excuse me, an interest-free loan of seven figures for their property. So they are looking for us to invest as non-ownership and take some of that risk with them. And that was something that we weren't willing to do. If they had that much concern, we did as well. So we said no to those, and we did receive information from the car wash. We vetted through them a little bit and quite a bit, and we were comfortable. We wanted to look in a new direction. Plus, there's a lot of competition in the area. I know across 275, I don't, Cooper Hawks is still going in or Capital Grill. You've got Hyde Park down the road. You've got the Six Mile and Hagerty development that's happening, along with Restaurant Row, as I call it on Hagerty. So we did not want to enter that risk arena. And that's one of the reasons why we chose this, which we feel they're very reputable.
Great, no, thank you for that. Just helps me understand sort of the backstory that comes up a lot of times from the residents. So thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel, anything else? We do not have a motion on the table? Let me go to Councilman Budzinski, and then I'll go to Councilman Montoy.
We talk about car washes a lot in our community and a lot of concern about the market being overflooded, you know, with there being so many car washes in close proximity to each other. And I do have concerns about the long-term sustainability. We've seen ebbs and flows in other industries, including pharmacies, which we are now seeing a lot of them close and then have to be repurposed. For, you know, places like Rite Aid and Walmart, they're more easily repurposed into, you know, being split into smaller areas or Dollar Trees or things of that nature. I have concerns about how easily we can repurpose car washes. Should there be a downturn in what has kind of been a peak over the last few years? So personally, I'd like to throw this into the committee of the whole so that we can maybe look strategically in Livonia about just this influx of new business related to car washes and, you know, how that fits with our strategic plan in our community.
Thank you.
Am I able to respond at this time?
You can. I'll let you respond at this point. Just letting everybody know, we do have a motion for committee of all.
So regarding that, we actually sat down with the mayor of Livonia before we even began this process, and she made that exact comparison with the pharmaceutical situation. Express has done quite extensive market study, especially on the greater Detroit area as they move through here. Like you said, this is our third one in the area, and it's not, they don't just throw these in without extensive research on the viability. And they have found that this area is generally underserved as far as compared with the Columbus area where Express began. The amount of washes per car in the area is still significantly lower. And the subscription model of this type of wash, once you get a subscription, someone who washes their car maybe once or twice a week is suddenly doing it almost every day on their way home. It really creates its own market, similar to like the way Starbucks did with the $5 cup of coffee on every corner. People didn't know they wanted that before it showed up. And then as far as the repurposing with the Rite Aid pharmacy comparison, that exact thing was brought up. And the mayor mentioned that the way that they kind of dealt with that influx at that time and preventing the excessive buildup of those businesses was, once a really, really nice one came along, they were able to get that one in and then say, we're going to hold any future proposed, one of these pharmacies, to that standard. And this car wash building with the much larger, it's got the interior vax, this is basically the crown jewel of what we can offer. It's going to allow you to hold any other car wash to that same standard, and it's really going to be tough for most others to beat it. As far as repurposing, I mean, this is a very successful company. They got about 120 going. This is not the kind that falls apart. And as far as compared to a standard car wash building, this one does have that large extra side area there where it's not just, you know, the structure around a tunnel. This is a significant warehouse-type chamber in the side where all the indoor vax are. So not that we would ever intend to be going out of business, but it's not quite as difficult to repurpose as you may imagine.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yep, floor silliers.
And thank you. And I, for my own reasons, I should also add, you know, I mean, the volume of car washes in our community is a leading concern for me, so that certainly went jumped out. I do share traffic concerns, as you're saying, you know, that you would be attracting recurring and capturing, you know, maybe appropriate use of word, traffic. However, that is a congested area with lights, you know, close by, a lot of new development coming of different types. So I do have concerns for the residents of that area. I would also say it is next to a historic cemetery and a historic building. And so I worry about the intensity of use and how that impacts the neighboring area right there. So just as we're in committee, those would be additional topics that I'd like for us as a council to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselman Montoy.
Thank you. Sir, I'm sorry I didn't catch your name.
Jake.
Jake?
Yep.
Is that, no.
Jake from State Farm?
Yeah, I was going there and then-
I get a lot of that, yeah.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, my colleague just touched upon the cemetery right there. How close are you to that cemetery? Pretty close?
So the, it's, I mean, it's the next door boundary. So we share a property boundary with it.
Your next-door neighbors and they're kind of quiet. I get it. And are you a franchisee then of this company?
So I represent the engineering designer, so I'm not associated with Express Wash themselves. We have a representative from Express here.
Who's going to own this then?
It would be, all their locations are owned by Express themselves.
Oh, they're all, no franchise, no.
They own the other two in Livonia.
Oh, okay, great. Okay.
130 washes right now, one on 150.
That's great.
All company-owned.
Wow. Interesting. Okay, I know I was by your, let's see, Eight Mile and Farmington the other day. I couldn't believe how packed it was. I voted against that one, incidentally, but I couldn't believe, I couldn't, you remember? Anyhow.
That's right.
That's right. I didn't like that vacuum color. You're right. Gosh, you got a good memory. I just wondered because, you know, like Carrie had said, you know, all you got to do is serve chicken anymore, and we get made fun of for the chicken and the car washes. So I like the committee of the whole idea, and if you can come up with some things we can wrap our arms around. I don't think the neighbors are real happy in getting that because of that area is congested right now, sir, in all fairness. And it's going to get more congested as things are built in, which is a real success story for all of us. But it's also a detriment to a little bit of a point, too.
I agree. And the traffic signal, there was a study done initially two or three years ago when this traffic signal was first getting thought up. And a lot of those traffic studies then were past their relevancy period for this, and they wanted to see more directly car wash trip generation models, which is why additional traffic information was requested. But at the planning commission meeting, someone from Fishbeck, I believe, who performed the initial traffic studies were there about the signal. And the signal was designed with the growth of the area in mind. It also allows for a left-turn lane on Fox, which is currently not allowed. It's a lot more controlled flow of the cars through that intersection there. And it also allows for a left-turn lane to be put into the Silver Bell Estates to honestly probably improve the ease of exit and access for that development there.
The most people I've heard from, just so you know, is quicker.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Yeah, they, they're complaining about the traffic because there's two ways into that subdivision. And I have a couple of good friends that are over there, and I'll tell you, it is hard turning out of there. It really is, in all seriousness. So anything we can do to look at a remedy of the situation, not that I'm 100% for it, but I think maybe have some of those answers, if you will, for the committee of the whole, if that's where it's going. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. I have Councilman Donovan, then Councilwoman Shale.
Thank you, Madam President, Mr. President. Before I go to the petitioner, Mr. Toramina, so this waiver use approval, are we rezoning this property then or not rezoning it? We're simply asking for a waiver use approval? And the site plan coincides with that waiver use approval?
Correct.
Okay. If they're proposing a restaurant, some massive chain, and I just, for the residents watching, I understand traffic is important, but I'm just trying to understand this. The car wash petition, you're saying your petition would generate less traffic? Your business would generate less traffic than a proposed restaurant?
Significantly less.
And that is based in traffic science studies?
Yeah, there was a whole traffic impact analysis submitted to planning.
So to Mr. Toramina, and not to put you on the spot, do we generally agree with that assumption they're making? Because again, if traffic is the concern of the residents, I get that. But it sounds like the petitioner is asking to improve the traffic area right there. And if we deny them, then the property owners just put the property back on the market and they find some chain restaurant. And what we're hearing from the petitioner is, well, we're going to generate more traffic if there's a restaurant. And we would have no oversight of that, right? They would not be coming to the city council for a restaurant.
So I think it's, there's a couple of things happening. You've got the traffic analysis, and I think what Jake is indicating is the trips that are generated by the use will not be greater than that of the restaurant. That may be correct, but you've got certain volume of traffic entering and exiting the site that is going to be greater than what the restaurant would have at certain times of the day, the PM peak and the AM peak. And I think that their analysis actually shows that. But you have to factor that into the other improvements that are being made and what, you know, would those occur otherwise if this were to be repurposed as another restaurant? You've got a traffic signal that is being funded primarily by Schoolcraft College should this pass. You've got the secondary exit going to Fox Drive with access to that signal. You've got now the residents of Quaker Town being able to take advantage of that traffic signal that didn't exist prior. So that should improve the turning movement significantly there. And then you've got the restriction on the right in and the right out. So those factors definitely benefit the traffic situation at that location. We'd have to go back and take a look because I think, you know, we have to compare apples to apples when you're talking about will it increase traffic? I think certain times of the day, there's no question that car wash is going to generate probably more traffic than a restaurant would otherwise. But overall, the number of trips generated, how many people are destined to go to a restaurant, the majority of traffic here is passerby traffic. It's people that are already either eastbound or westbound on the Six Mile Road that are now going to come in there, use the facility, and then exit back out. So from that standpoint, it's probably not increasing the traffic as much as a restaurant.
And that's helpful because again, the complaints I've gotten was, was traffic oriented, understandably so. It is a congested area, and if it stays a restaurant, this doesn't come back for the city council. They can update the facade or whatnot, but it's a restaurant, operates-
There would be limitations on the improvements that could be made to the building. The seating would probably have to remain the same. So, but you're correct. A full-service restaurant would be treated as a permitted use to go back.
And I'm assuming that Schoolcraft and the landowner and anyone else would not, the future potential restaurant would not make all these traffic improvements. So that's kind of where I'm at right now is, you know, I get not wanting the car wash because of the intended consequences of traffic. At the same time, you guys are proposing with partnership of Schoolcraft College to improve the traffic circulation, the left turning light right there that Quaker Town currently does not have and is not going to have if there's just a restaurant here. So I guess those are some of my questions. So I'll think about that as we move forward. A few questions real quick. Why three lanes of traffic in the traffic queue? Looking at how you have it queued up for three lanes on the side, why three as opposed to just two?
So in general, one of the main concerns we tend to get from townships regarding car washes is they get concerned about traffic stacking up into those lanes and spilling out. With our, we've got a really high industrial-powered blower at the end of the tunnel. That means we don't need, you know, usually you see people come out of a car wash, you've got an employee out there hand drying with towels and stuff. We don't need that, so we can cycle through over 100 cars an hour if needed. So those really don't stack up that much, but we still try to get to 20 stacking spaces in our stacking lane. And just the short length of this site didn't allow for two to meet that number. But our 90th percentile, our 95th percentile stacking is still only six to eight cars, so you're never going to see that spill out. I mean, maybe once a year on a warm weekend after a blizzard or something. But we have models to predict when that's going to happen. They got extra employees on site to manage traffic.
Okay, then there's some discussion about enhancing the elevation, the south side along Six Mile. What are your plans to do that? And are you prepared to speak about that tonight or at the committee meeting?
At the committee meeting, for sure. I'm not the architect that's putting together the renderings and design for that. I know it would feature facades and kind of some additional detail vertically down the corners and bends just to kind of break up the monotony of the facade a little bit. I think that's what we discussed at the previous meeting.
And I know there was conversation about just doing that thin brick. What do you call it now, quick brick?
Quick brick, yeah. It's like a facade covering.
But if I remember correctly, at your location on Plymouth and Middle Belt where the former Archie's was, that's not your location, excuse me, sorry. That's the other location. Well, your competitor used real brick. Because I saw the masons out there using full brick as opposed to just quick brick, so that's something to think about. Windows, I know, so, and touch on that real quick. So most of the activity is all inside, so the car wash is primarily inside?
Yes.
There's vacuum operations, are there windows in there to bring in light? How does that work?
It's, I mean, it's got two fairly large, you know, 20-foot overhead doors that are open all business day in there. And then I believe there are some windows along the west side of the building there, kind of up higher. As far as the east side of the building that faces the cemetery, and you're not seeing much there, but if you were to put windows there, you're just looking into the car wash tunnel. It's not, a lot of mechanical equipment no one wants to see.
But there's a lot of skylights, you're saying, on top of the roof?
Yeah, there's lighting, oh yeah, you get plenty of lighting in there.
Okay, then my last question tonight, I think, is vacuums, why are they free? I know we're starting to see some of this where the vacuums are free. Is that to solicit more business?
Yeah, it's just, you know, almost an advertisement for the business brings in, and it's just a nice convenient feature that kind of sets you apart from some of the others.
Okay, all right, thanks, counsel. Thank you, sir.
Counselman Shale.
Yes, I'd like to add an approving and a denying. So there's all three available, approving, denying, and committee of the whole.
Thank you. We have an approving and a denying, a committee of the whole. Anything else from counsel? I just have a couple of questions. I love the business model. I just, I got to tell you, I think this is potentially the worst possible location, especially with the development that's going to be, right now with the demo happening with the development app. Where is it? Six Mile and Hagerty. And if you even put that light there, like, what, let me just run through this situation because I have to drive this every single day, and even in the morning, you're back, I'm backed up to 90, I'm backed up to 275. So you're queuing people, they're coming out, you have a light that stopped, and you have a backup to, you know, hugely over the expressway. Nobody's letting anybody out. I know people can go, you know, kind of take that service road. But let's think hypothetically, obviously you have a profitable, you want a good business model, you want a good customer experience. As a customer, I'm just trying to think in my mind, because that distance between the outlet to the Six Mile, and it's before the light, it's kind of tough. I mean, can you, do you have any concerns? Do you see those concerns at all? To me, that was the first thing, and that's what the residents even across the street are saying. It's like you're going to put a hotel, apartments, all of this development that's already booming on Hagerty all the way up. I just see this to be a crazy disaster at times.
And I think that's why the access on the northeast or northwest corner there on the Fox Drive is really the saving grace.
Will you have a dedicated employee all the time to literally funnel cars around?
So there is an employee outside at all times for, you know, trash pickup. It assists people with the hiosk or anything like that. But yes, and also that was a factor when the, with the change to the right in, right out. Yeah, it was determined that a left turn there was, that was a factor in why the left turn was eliminated, just to ease the issues.
Have you done the traffic study based on the projected growth of that corner?
So the initial traffic signal study, which was, it is two years old now, was, took all that into account.
But that plan wasn't even, I don't think that plan was even happening. I'm talking about the development.
As far as the car wash, yeah, like the car wash use was not a part of that, but the Buca de Pepo restaurant at the time was.
Yeah, no, what I'm speaking of is the new development that's literally going to be to the west of you.
Yeah, that was part, I believe was part, I don't know.
I think that was Comerica Bank at the time.
It took into account future development. I don't know if it knew what specifically that was going to be. But there was consideration that there was going to be an increase in the future.
Like I said, at certain locations, I just, I just see this just as a mess, just truthfully even what, with what the traffic is right this time. I mean, I wouldn't want to jump in there. I feel like you'd be landlocked. Those are my two cents. I know we've got all three motions. I'm going to go back to Councilman Donovan.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. Just for your sake, sir, so that the next meeting, the regular, and for the sake of the audience that may be watching this, the next meeting will vote on whether it goes to committee of the whole, whether we approve it outright or whether we just deny it. If we go to committee, that is open to the public, and you can attend that meeting, and we can discuss it much more in depth. What I would say for you, sir, is confirm that your traffic study to Schoolcraft College representatives as well are taking, to Mr. McCullough's point, taking consideration of the new development that is currently ongoing. It's got Whole Foods, it's got additional operating businesses now that your traffic study may or may not have incorporated, I don't know. So I would definitely confirm that because that's going to be something that's going to come up if this goes to committee. I think that's very important. Then, of course, try to get those updated renderings of the south, so. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else from counsel? Anything from the audience? Somebody go to the audience now, I appreciate that.
Thanks for your time.
Yeah, thank you. If you'd like to make your way to the podium, yep, I'll start with you. Name and address, you got two minutes, two minutes on the-
Oh, come on, Brandon.
I know, I wish I could.
I've been waiting four hours.
I have to follow, I have to follow this dude named Robert, is his rule.
No, no, I get more than, you said three minutes earlier, so I want my three minutes.
I know.
My name is, my name is Kathy Bilger. I live in Fox Creek Meadows. I used to live in Quaker Town subdivision. My son still lives in Quaker Town subdivision. I'm coming to you tonight as a historian. I am a local historian. I do a lot of work for the Livonia Historical Society. I also do a lot of work for Farmington and Pontiac and Oakland County. I know my stuff. The one thing that has not been discussed tonight is the cemetery that is next door. Sorry, gentlemen, you don't live in Livonia.
Direct here.
You do not have, you do not have a vested interest in Livonia. You do. City council owns that cemetery. The city of Livonia took custody of the cemetery when it became a city. Under the Michigan compiled laws, chapter 128.61 gives you the, not only the custody of the cemetery, but the responsibility to maintain it. The cemetery is an old cemetery. The first burial was 1832. It was Emory Sands. There were seven more, there were seven more burials before it became an official cemetery. There were seven more, there were seven more burials before it became an official cemetery. That land was donated by Parden Briggs and Arastia Stark Weather. It was deeded to the township of Livonia and the township of Plymouth. Most of the graves in that cemetery have limestone. Limestone is fragile. Limestone is made of calcium carbonate. Your average Tums is made out of sodium bicarbonate. They're not too similar. Calcium carbonate is soft. It fractures easily. It is susceptible to weather. It is susceptible to acid rain. We do have a few marble tombstones in there. Marble is nothing more than limestone that's been given a good, healthy squeeze. You want to damage, you want to damage limestone or marble, pour vinegar on it.
It's time.
Come on.
I know, I'm sorry. That's, I'm sorry, Robert's rules.
That was two minutes or three?
That was two. Two minutes on.
You told me I had three.
Three minutes are usually prior to, those are general items, the two minutes on each item. I apologize if I, if you got it mistaken. It is two minutes on each item.
I have to save the cemetery.
The next meeting, well, you know, we'll have audience communication.
Their blowers will kill it.
I hear you.
Do the best.
I got you.
You did good earlier today, do it again.
Appreciate you staying here and hanging out with us. Good evening.
Good evening. Cindy Fleming, Livonia, again. I would like to say two things. Last week, I had the opportunity to hang out with a bunch of senior citizens for a pizza lunch. And I heard from many of those senior citizens who live in Quaker Town that they are very concerned about traffic because it is a huge issue. And even with the turn signal with all the development, that's one thing. So I just am speaking on their behalf. The other thing is that I have a concern about these business models of these car washes with the outdoor-free vacuums. I had the opportunity to go to these people's establishment on Plymouth Road last week, and I observed what I felt was two people, I was using the vacuum, but there were two separate cars, and there was a young lady who actually was changing her clothes in a car. And there are nobody monitoring those vacuums. So there were two different cars. This young lady actually looked like possibly a sex worker. And there was a man and another car. And so I then proceeded to get my car washed, and I was kind of disappointed at the car wash because I have a minivan and it doesn't get cleaned on the back, and there are no attendants. I also heard that these business models with these car washes where everything is automated, it's 10 years and we're done. So we, we run it for 10 years, we have very limited employees.
That's time. Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, again. Barbara Glover, Myrna Court. I just wanted to speak on, this other woman just brought up, the history of the cemetery that's near this car wash, it's next door. And that cemetery, I went on a tour about a year ago, that they, somebody was running through a historical society where there's a lot of graves there that, for people that were in the Underground Railroad movement. This is a significant thing in our country's history, and Livonia played a big role in it. And, you know, a car wash, what does a car wash have, you know, that could be damaging to graves? Water, other chemicals they use to clean the cars with, as this other person said, that could damage the graves, the stones, et cetera? Do we really want to put such a historical place that we have the honor to take care of in the danger because of a car wash? We have a million car washes in this city, and this company has already stated they already have two locations in our city. How many more do they need? Why don't they go branch out to other cities and put their businesses in Redford or Plymouth or somewhere else? I mean, what are we going to have, only one type of car wash in our city, just like we have too many Walgreens or too many, I don't know, chicken restaurants? I think we have to really take a step back and look at, there's, sure, there's going to be traffic problems with a restaurant, but at least a restaurant is a nice place to sit down and eat, and people can meet and gather there, and the residents won't have the cars coming and going as much, I don't think, or maybe when, at dinnertime or something. But it's not going to damage the cemetery next door. So I'm concerned about the cemetery and us as custodians of our nation's history. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Betsy Kilhoun, Grenada. So you probably know that the Historic Preservation Commission has oversight of the cemetery next door. I've been talking to the SHPO, the Michigan State Historic Preservation Office, that says that, you know, a business like a car wash could be argued that it interferes with the peaceful enjoyment of a historic cemetery, very historic cemetery. Everything Kathy said was right. Sojourner Truth actually spoke at the union meeting house next to this cemetery. According to the SHPO, it's customary to, at the very least, to provide some sort of a buffer because of the danger of water. So I'm not seeing much of a buffer, and you'd think there needs to be, if you do decide to have this, it needs to go further to the west. In addition, Councilwoman, member Bzinski's questions about car washes are very valid. You all know, you've all seen the Bloomberg article from last year where, you know, everyone's like, why are there so many car washes? It's something that's facing the nation. Private equity is involved. As people have said, it doesn't provide very many jobs. And we have other issues as well. So I hope you do send this to a committee meeting where this can be discussed further. And again, think of our historic cemetery.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Hello, my name is Ray Whitney. I'm a Quaker Town homeowner. We're three, excuse me, 300 homes in Quaker Town. We have two exits to get out of our subdivision. One is on Hagerty Road, one is on Six Mile, exactly across from the, where this entrance is going to be. Sometimes we wait three to five minutes to get out of our drive because we wait for three, three lights getting off of Hagerty because it keeps on flowing through. People are making right-hand turns off of Hagerty. And, okay, and besides that, the people across, okay, the car wash is suggesting that they're going to have a right turn in or right turn out. Okay, the people that come from the bank or whatever, they use that as a suggestion. They don't, don't follow it, okay? It's too much of a temptation to get on 275. Okay? Close, accidents have been close. A lot of people will try to make a left-hand turn into the car wash off of Six Mile because it's there. Okay, unless there's a better way of coming into the car wash. There's got to be some way where people haven't got the option to make a left-hand turn. I mean, if it's, if it's open, it's, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, Jim Bigga, Lake Shore Road. I'm confused as to what kind of traffic study is being done, as Mr. McCullough has stated. If you're coming westbound over Six Mile, you've got the light at the exiting from the expressway, then you've got now a new traffic light that's going to go in at Fox, then you're going to have the one at Six Mile. So that's going to just be a constant stop and go for most of the morning. And if this is going to operate at seven in the morning or eight in the morning, some days, nobody's going to be able to go anywhere because of the amount of stop and go. Plus, if you're going to be making a left-hand turn out of Fox Drive going eastbound onto Six Mile, I don't know how the timing of all the lights and everything are going to go, but that's just going to be a nightmare. I just, there's got to be a better way to do it. I don't know if everybody should go in and out Fox Drive, that's be in and out from there, and maybe then they can go up off of Hagerty and then make a left and right-hand turn from Fox Drive there. But just that short amount between 275 and Fox, even when it was Buca de Pepa, it was always hard certain times of the day to get in and out. And I don't think this plan improves any of that. That's just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Neil Morowski, I live in Quaker Town. And yeah, we're not happy with this. The city of Livonia has 36 square, square miles, right? How many gas stations or car washes in the city of Livonia? There's over 17. That puts one ga, one car wash every, over, little over two square miles away from each other if you were to pace them out. Do we need another car wash in the city of Livonia? Same thing with chicken places. How many chicken places, fast food chicken places are in the city of Livonia? Over 17, okay? Now, I live in Quaker Town, it's a nightmare getting in and out of there. Now granted, they've done a traffic study, I get that, but maybe we should have an independent person do the traffic study instead of somebody who has a vested interest in this property. That's all I got.
No, I appreciate it, thank you. Good evening.
Hello there, Eileen McDonald. There are, there's a Jack's Car Wash, a mile and, mile, 1.4 miles to the west in Northville. There's another car wash on Five Mile, which I think is called Diamond. That's 1.6 miles. There's a car wash at Five Mile in Levan. There's a car wash at Eight Mile and, in Farmington, just west of Gill. You know, these car wash models are, because my husband has one, you pay by the month whether or not you use it or not, so they're guaranteeing, or they're hoping that people are just going to pay, and money just comes out of their accounts, and that's, that's their model. But this location is just the wrong location. The cemetery is our heritage, our history. It just doesn't make any sense to put it there. The, we, I talked to some people that live in the senior centers that are behind that property, and they're concerned with getting in and out and the additional traffic. So, and we just need to preserve our history. You know, we don't, do a very good job doing that, and this is a prime example, because to me, I couldn't figure out why we even put a restaurant there in the first place as it was. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Laura Janikow, Munger Street. People have pretty much said everything, but I, I just hope before you make your decision that you do go there and see the cemetery. It's a pretty, it's a very moving thing, and to see that the graves go right up to the fence line, and that's right where that car wash is going to start. And also, if you're going to go visit, go visit after there's a, a show at the Trinity Theater, because we rent that to them, and there should be parking there. I'm sure there's laws about how much parking they need to have for their events. And when they have events, they, they have a lot of cars come in there. So please, go and check it out. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I don't see anybody else for audience communication. I'll bring it back to counsel, if counsel has anything else they want to say, but right now, we do have three motions on the table. We have an approving and a denying and a committee of the whole, which is usually standard. Counsel, anything else? We already went to the audience. All right, so with that being said, this will be on the next regular agenda. Yes.
You may want to explain to the audience what that means.
Yeah, so Wednesday, November 5th, 7 o'clock, this will be on the agenda, and that is going to be the voting meeting. So that is the meeting that if you'd like to be at, to do audience communication, that's going to be the meeting to be here. So November 5th, and it'll be on the regular at 7 o'clock. All right? Thanks. We're going to move on to item three, which is a waiver petition comes to us from the Planning Commission in reference to petition 2025-08-02-16 submitted by May Breeze Spa, requesting waiver use approval to operate a massage establishment at 34722 Plymouth Road located at the northwest corner of Plymouth Road and Priscilla Lane. Mr. Termina?
Very briefly, this is the Plymouth Place Shopping Center, multi-tenant retail plaza. This unit would be located near the middle of that plaza and about a, roughly a 3,000-square-foot unit. No modifications are, to the exterior are planned, just interior changes to the unit. This spa would comply with the separation requirements of the ordinance as well as the limited hours of operation. Floor plans are provided, it's a mix of rooms. One of the conditions is that there be no doors provided in any of the massage therapy rooms, which, which has been agreed to. Parking is not an issue, and the Planning Commission is recommending approval.
Counsel? And then we do have the petitioner here. If you'd like to make your way up, just in case we do have some questions for counsel, if you could say your name and address for the record.
Okay, first, good evening, and thank you for staying so late for us. My name is Zhao Fang Yang, address 2561 Woodmont Drive East, Canton, 48188.
Awesome. Thank you so much for, thank you for being here this late. Counselwoman, open it up to you for questions. Councilwoman Bzinski.
Okay, so I, I watched the Planning Commission meeting on, on this, so I understand you've entered into a 10-year lease agreement at this location, is that correct?
Yes.
And that you have a location in Westland currently?
Yes.
How long have you been operating that business?
Nine years.
And will you be maintaining that location and adding this as a second, or will this be your only location?
This is going to be my only location. I'm going to shut it down, the older one.
What is prompting your move and, and your selection of Livonia for the new location?
Because my current location is only 900, 980 square foot. It's too small for my planning. I want to change my direction, I want to do facial many, this is why I want to move.
How many employees do you have, or do you expect to have? And workers, how many work, people working for you, do you expect?
I think it started with two. I hope it may be four, five at least.
There's a lot of massage and, and manager places on Plymouth Road. Do you have concerns about competition, or do you expect that your current customers will come to your new location?
Because I'm going to change my direction, so my, I would do many facial, so might be different customers.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, counsel?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Twy.
Thank you. How, how long have you been, were you born here in this country?
No, I've been here 16 years.
16, okay. And how many years have you been doing massage?
Nine years. I was, I was doing real estate business.
Oh, okay. And I'm sorry, I didn't catch a reason for you leaving your current location.
My current location is too small.
Too small, okay.
Yes.
Have you had any problems there? I mean, any calls or anything from police or violations of any sorts?
I had, had one time, but now, nobody was charged. So one time customer complained.
Complained?
Yes.
About his or her massage, or just?
No, he never did massage, he just complained.
General complaint?
Yes.
Okay. What type of massages do you give?
With those Swedish deep tissue.
Okay. All right, and you're getting into something with the face now, you said?
Yeah, now I'm going to change the direction to facial. Customer many will be women.
Okay.
Being female, I mean.
Yeah, okay. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselwoman Donovan.
Thanks, Mr. President. Hi, thank you for being here this evening. Like Councilwoman Bzinski said earlier, we are starting to see more of this type of business coming to Livonia.[1784.76] Are you worried there's too many of your types of business? Are you worried about closing down because of no business?
Oh, no, I'm, I, I don't know, nothing about, I think I will do good.
You do a good job. You're better than your competition?
Yeah, competition is normal for any business.
Yeah, good answer.
Good answer.
We'll offer an approving and a denying resolution for the next regular meeting. Mr. President?
All right, so there's approving and a denying. Councilwoman Bezinski.
I just have one more question, because I tried to Google to, to look at your website. Do you have a website for your current Westland business?
Current, I don't, but for new business, ever so newly, I will have one.
Okay. So how have you been advertising your current business, may I ask?
Right now, just Google.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else from counsel?
Yes.
Yes.
Where do you get your employees from?
From massage school.
Massage school, and where, where's that located?
Southfield, there's a big massage school.
The Southfield, and how long does that take usually to, to get like a certificate or whatever for massage?
Depends, like if you go full time, only half a year. If you go like two, three days, may, one year.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for counsel? Anything from the audience? All right, so right now, you have an approving and a denying, and what that means is you're going to want to be here on November 5th at 7 o'clock.
Okay.
So that's when this item will be officially voted on. And you, you'd have to, I'm sorry, you can't speak from the, the audience. If you're with the petitioner, you can come up. Are you with the petitioner?
Yes, it's my London or the Marshall.
Okay, yes, no, he, before we close it, I, you, yeah, if you could just give your name and address for the record, and you can talk.
Marshall, SO 1516, we're on the drive, was Bloomfield, Michigan. The only reason I want to come up here, I can't make it on the 5th. I'm taking my 90-year-old mom to Arizona and San Diego to visit her family.
Good sign.
So I can't make it there. But she signed a 10-year personal guarantee lease.
Okay.
That's really very important. Then she's very confident of what she wants to do. And she's spending all the money inside herself on the construction, the whole thing.
So what I would-
So she's really very confident of what she wants to do.
Absolutely. And right now, so with the 5th, we, we could, if you talk to Sarah in our council office, we could push it to the time that you would be back to the next meeting, or she could come here on the 5th for the regular. That would be your choice. What I would recommend doing is give us an, if you have any, any additional information, just like you're stating, send it to Sarah in the council office who you talked to, and just, just send things, and, you know, references. There's cards right up there. Just give us information that we can have to make a better decision.
Brandon, Council President?
Yes.
Sir, thanks for being here this evening. To the council president's point, if you can send, since you can't come to the November 5th meeting with your tenant, if you could email the city council an official letter explaining your tenant and some of the things you just explained. She's already invested in the space, she signed a 10-year lease, those are important fact-finding things that we can, help us make a decision. Because I didn't know that. I didn't know that she's already leasing the space, so if we deny it, she'd be in a, in a very difficult position if she cannot use the, the operation. Likewise, if she's already invested in the space, you know, those are some considering factors. But to Councilwoman Toye's point, we want to do some research on who her company is as well, and the past company. So if you could help explain some of those things in your letter as well with, with your tenant, that'd help us make a decision at the next meeting.
Yeah. And let us know if you want to push it off, just let Sarah know, and we can push it to another meeting, but, you know, choice is yours.
I already have to take my mom, that's all.
No, hey, listen, families, families first, man.
I have to make sure she visits all her family.
Absolutely, absolutely. Just let us know. All right, thank you.
I will. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate you guys.
He's a good son, Mr. President.
Yes, absolutely. All right. Item four is an award of bid, comes to us from Livonia Fire and Rescue in reference to Station 3 apparatus bay floor repair and replacement from budgeted funds. You didn't think it was coming. You didn't think you were going to get here, but you did.
Ten more minutes.
Yes, good to see you, man.
Actually, 12 more minutes, if anyone's counting.
Tomorrow.
I know.
We get paid extra for this.
We get paid by the hour.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
So tell us about what, what you got going here.
So Station 3 was finished in 1999. In 2013, 14, we've had the floor replaced once, not the floor, but just epoxy on itself. They have to remove all the epoxy. It's been another 11 years since that was done. The floor is coming up, it's peeling up off the ground. It's a station that we use as our open house. We have lots of people come through, but also protects the floor between the elements coming off the trucks and the concrete and staining, and just the safety, you know, slip hazards and that, and part of that.
Yeah.
So went out for the bid, through the mitten bid, as we do through the city, at a price of what this is. Had the three different companies coming in, and the one that had the best warranty and the best product is the Gator Guard Concrete Company.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'll offer approving consent, there's no objection from my colleagues.
We got an approving consent. Counsel, any issues? Audience? You, you had me at Gator, so I was good. Your matter is all but assured to be approved. Was that all you had?
That's it.
Mr. President, I think this is his first council meeting before us.
Go Lions.
Yeah, go Lions.
Sorry, sorry about tonight.
Sorry about that.
The chief should thank you for me.
Yeah, for real. Where's Chief Genison today? Is he partying?
I'm sure he's watching.
Yeah, he is.
Yeah, he's in his bedroom right now.
All right, thank you.
Have a good one.
Yes, thanks.
All right, on to item five is an award of contract, comes to us from the Department of Economic Development to provide technical assistance for Livonia Small Business Grantee Award winners of the Livonia Small Business Assistance Grant Program utilizing grant funds. Take it away.
Good evening. This would be a third round of business grants for COVID funding. This would be a repeat of our last round of grants, which provided technical assistance to small, micro-sized businesses to help support their growth and need. This would, award would be to Proxy LOC. They were one of the service providers that we used last time, and we had very positive feedback. They did come in at the lowest bid of $120,000 that would support 20 businesses and their technical assistance training.
Awesome. Counsel? Councilwoman Bezinski.
I was going to motion for an approving on consent, if there's no objection from my colleagues.
We got an approving on consent. Anything else from counsel? Yeah?
Thanks for being here this evening. This will be the last round. There'll be, all the, all that original COVID CDBG money will be gone, right?
Should be, yes.
Should be?
Well, as far as I know, this is the last of the-
Listen, if made us sincere, at least, let's, you know, you, you wanted to hang out at a council meeting.
Yeah, I did want to hang out here. So this is the last of, this was approved in, I think, March with the budget. We have two other activities that are still in progress, but this is with that last round of funding, correct?
Great, thank you.
Well, thanks for, you both hanging out with us. Hopefully, it was an entertaining evening at times, so you have an approving on consent. Anything from the audience? All right.
No.
Thanks for hanging out, guys. Appreciate you. All right, moving on, item six is an award of bid, comes to us from the Department of Public Works in reference for the purchase of installation of two cement pa, two cement pads and two prefabricated pole barns from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore?
Evening, Counsel. Doug Moore with DPW. Counsel, we're looking to have two pole barns installed for us. The item was posted on mitten on September 10th. A pre-bid meeting was held on September 18th with three companies attending. The bids were opened on September 30th, and four bids were received. The city staff chose to go with the second bidder, Shaw Construction. Shaw received a 3% bidder's discount, being a Livonia-based company. The discount made their bid, for all intents and purposes, a tie with the low bidder. Further, Shaw has done projects for Livonia and has performed well. These items were in the capital budget for last year and this year. We didn't have enough funding last year, so we put in and asked the, the funding to be carryforwarded. We were working with a QBS architectural firm, but the pricing of the structures came back over budget, so we started over again. Each building will be 40 by 60 feet. Each one will have a 10-foot garage door and an eight-man, 8-foot man door. The exterior surfaces will be metal and forest green color. Insulation, wallboard, potential electrical and plumbing can be done at a later date if it's warranted or even wanted. One building will be at Ford Field, one building will be at Greenmead. The Ford Field will be located at the, the Semtah Lot is that south parking lot, it'll be at the southeast corner. Ford, I'm sorry, Greenmead will be located right behind the comfort station for the soccer And lastly, we're asking counsel to approve these. Shaw's bid was $160,982, $982.32. We're asking to put in $70,000 for the concrete work through our low bidder, Piedmont. And further, we're asking to have the permits waived, the construction permits, because if not, we're just going to be paying inspection.
So for everybody watching at home, because there's a ton of them right now, that's for both buildings?
Yes.
And cement pads?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, yes?
But that wasn't, to your point, Mr. Moore, that does not include certain interior finishes, correct?
Correct.
So no insulation, no electrical, no plumbing, just basically the shell, exterior shell and cement pad and roofing?
Correct. We're using them completely for parks maintenance storage at both parks.
So it costs about $167,000 to build those kind of buildings. Wow.
Yes.
Plus $70,000 for the pads, right?
About $70,000-ish.
For the pads.
Yeah, with the pads, it's $230,000 with the pads also. And the cement is, or the concrete is probably a little bit higher, but-
Yeah, the concrete portion will be more, so it's like $230,000 total for the two structures.
Yeah.
Okay, and what did you want to store inside of these, again?
It's park maintenance equipment.
Keeps vehicles.
Yep.
There's a ton of conversation. I can't hear you right now, guys. There's, you, you're keeping these vehicles outside, the weather, going to keep them inside?
They're currently being stored in buildings. The one at Ford Field's too small, we do have stuff outside. The one at Greenmead, it's in the building that's tied to their greenhouse, so there's activities and other things going on. So that equipment will be moved out, and then that house will just be turned over for Greenmead events. And then they also have some things that they want to store inside also.
Okay, great. I'll offer an approving on consent, there's no objection from my colleagues.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before we leave this, could you tell me what a man door is?
You don't want to know.
Eight, eight-foot person door, you just-
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wondered, that's all.
Why would you think it was?
I wasn't sure.
Well, Mr. Moore, great work on that. We have an approving on consent. Any questions or concerns from the audience? Seeing none, Mr. Moore, take us home. Item seven. Item seven is an award of bid, comes to us again from the Department of Public Works for the purchase and installation of two rooftop HVAC units at the fleet maintenance garage from budgeted funds.
So these were posted on mitten on September 9th. We had a pre-bid meeting on September 16th, and the bids were opened on September 30th with four bids received.